Good evening. Welcome to Lower Frederick Township Board of Supervisors Work Session for April 22nd of 2025. Let's all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. All members are available on the board this evening except for Supervisor Yizer. Unfortunately, his mother passed away this morning, so he will not be joining us this evening. If you have a moment, send your best thoughts his way. Our staff is available. Jason, Peter, Carol, Brian, and we have Bob Preston on Zoom this evening. Township meetings are recorded for the purpose of preparing the minutes, and the recording is destroyed after the minutes are approved. The meeting will be posted online on the Township YouTube channel. The link can be found on the Board of Supervisors page on the Township website. It is requested that all persons wishing to speak for the board shall state their name, address, and the subject matter upon which they wish to speak for the record. In the interest of facilitating business of the board, all persons addressing the board shall be limited to three minutes unless such time is extended by the chair for good cause. Individuals are requested to remain in their seats and to respect when other persons are speaking. The Board of Supervisors will provide a reasonable opportunity for citizens to comment on any non-agenda items after all agenda items have been addressed but prior to the adjournment of the public meeting. Wanted to let everyone know, we had a board tour of the public works area on April 15th to assess the need for the requested Conex container, which is actually a subject on our agenda this evening. And the board had an informational meeting last night with our new zoning code enforcement team at Barry Isit. Very informative. And this evening, we had an executive session to discuss real estate. First item on our business this evening, we're going to move our item F, Sewer Zieglerville Road Low Pressure Sanitary Sewer Plan Grant Discussion up because Mr. Preston is with us on Zoom this evening.
So what you're having fun of you is the completed low-pressure sanitary sewer extension plan, which was done per the Goshenhopin Special Study, which was finalized last year. There is a PA Small Water and Sewer Program grant that's open until the end of this month, and I didn't want the board to not have an opportunity to apply if it's a wished, as this grant isn't available every year. That being said, and I also understand the board just received the plan a few weeks ago and have not had time to discuss it prior to tonight, I did not want the Supervisors to feel compelled to move forward with a project like this before they were comfortable, as I do think there will be opportunities in the future to apply for grant funding, potentially with no matching funds. And as Noel said, Bob Preston is on via Zoom if the board has questions.
Anyone have any questions or comments for Bob?
I haven't really had a chance to study this, so I'm kind of not ready to ask any questions.
Sort of in the same boat as you. We just received this and moving forward, there's a lot of moving parts related to having it installed and getting the grant and so forth and so on. So for myself at this time, I think we should take a pause on that grant so we could get it right and see if there's something available in the near future.
Well, the LSA grant is coming up in November, and that's a no-match, so I think we'll have plenty of time before that, and let's make sure we talk about it early in the fall. Get our letters of support together, get our plans together, and keep moving on with this.
Any other questions or comments?
No, I agree. Just to wait, see what we can get everything together.
Okay. So at this time, we're going to table this item for further discussion later on and work out some logistics for a potential grant submission in November. Thank you. Next on our item for business evening, Artisan Land Development Boundary Line Adjustment Request, and we have Jackie.
Hey, Bob, you can go if you want.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you for having Artisan in front of you this evening. I am Jackie Erickson with Artisan. I have two other members from our team with us. We are on your agenda for the boundary line adjustment request, and I'd like to turn to Solicitor Nelson maybe to give us context.
Yeah, no, I'm fine running it from here.
Perfect, thank you.
So, you know, as you know, Artisan is proposing a development that is crossing over three boundaries, Schwenksville Borough, Perkyomen Township, and Lower Frederick Township. What we have at issue here is there are currently three lots that are proposed that are being cut, not in half, but portions of it are going to be in both in Perkyomen and Lower Frederick Townships. That raised some zoning issues for the applicant, and so the applicant requested, under a new law that was passed in 2022, Dex kind of simplifies the process, requested whether or not Perkyomen and Lower Frederick would consider adjusting their boundary line so that these three lots, one of which would end up entirely in Lower Frederick Township, and two of them would end up entirely within Perkyomen Township. And that's the request that is before you today. We've had discussions regarding this request with the other municipalities. We've had discussions, I think about a month ago, with the applicant on this request. I have put together a proposed resolution if the board does want to move forward with this request. What this resolution would basically do is would authorize the staff, as well as Carol Schuler and myself, to work with Artisan in moving forward in preparing all the necessary documents that are required under the law to actually make, you know, put an actual boundary line change in front of this board for future adoption. So just simply put, if we do, if the board does decide to move forward with this, we would have to work with Artisan to prepare in ordinance, both Lower Frederick and Perkyomen would have to adopt the same ordinance. That ordinance would have a plan as an exhibit that showed the current boundary line and the proposed new boundary line. So we would have to work with Artisan in putting that together. And also, obviously, we'd have to make sure that Perkyomen is okay with the new boundary line as well as us. And so that, you know, certainly is a process. It's going to take a lot of township input, and so we need to kind of, it's something that the board needs to approve and before we actually spend, you know, time and money on it. And also, it's not fair for Artisan. You know, Artisan needs to know that they're not barking up the wrong tree. So not to read through the resolution entirely, but basically what this resolution would do, as I said, would authorize the staff to start this process and work towards preparing a plan and the ordinance as is necessary. Based on discussions that have been had, this resolution also sets some conditions upon the township agreeing to move forward with this. Basically, you know, the township feels that if we're going to do something as, you know, it's a small change, but it's a very impactful change, and it's something that doesn't normally happen. I can tell you my 25 years, this is the first time it's ever been suggested, much less pursued, that we should make sure that this change not only benefits, you know, just this particular applicant, but the township as a whole. So these conditions put forth in the resolution, and the board can agree to these conditions, can alter these conditions, can take them out, can add additional conditions, whatever you want. These are just suggestions to start with. The first one would be to reconfigure and improve the intersection of Smith and Centennial Roads in substantial compliance with the alignment presented by the conceptual realignment plan dated February 18th, 2025, which was prepared by Artisan's engineer. Said substantial compliance to be determined and to the reasonable satisfaction of the Carol Schuler, the township engineer. Second condition would be having Artisan provide a 20-foot sanitary sewer easement and install a 2-inch HDPE conduit pipe in said easement in substantial compliance with the utility plant exhibits last revised March 28th, 2025. Once again, prepared by Artisan. Said substantial compliance and associated construction specifications to be determined by and to the reasonable satisfaction of the engineer for Schwenksville Borough Authority, because it's the authority whose system this particular pipe would be connected to. The third condition would be having Artisan install a concrete sidewalk along its entire frontage with Centennial and Smith Roads from the end of the current sidewalk on Centennial and Schwenksville Borough, along the entire length of Centennial to its intersection with Smith, and then along Smith to the end of Artisan's property. The entire length of said sidewalk shall be uniformly designed and constructed to the specifications of Perkyomen or Lower Frederick Township as agreed to by these two municipalities. Those portions of the sidewalk within Lower Frederick Township shall be designed and constructed to the reasonable satisfaction of the Lower Frederick Township engineer. The fourth condition would be having Artisan forwarding correspondence to the owners of the six properties that are along Smith Road that are currently split between Lower Frederick and Perkyomen Townships. I'm not going to, the addresses are 30, 32, 36, 301, and 314 Smith Road, and then 230 Cemetery Road. This correspondence to these properties shall state that, at the request of Artisan concerning the project, Lower Frederick and Perkyomen are considering moving their current municipal boundary so that all of Artisan's new residential lots are located in one municipality. This correspondence will ask each of these property owners if they would like Lower Frederick and Perkyomen Townships to consider moving the municipal boundary line, splitting their property in conjunction with Artisan's request. If they would like the municipalities to add their property to this proposal, the property owners will have two weeks to sign and return this correspondence to Artisan, indicating their interest and stating which township they would like their property to be entirely located within. The correspondence shall contain signature lines, checkboxes, and a self-addressed stamped envelope. To simplify this response process, Artisan shall forward copies of any returned correspondence to Lower Frederick and Perkyomen immediately upon receipt. The ordinance and plan shall be prepared to reflect the requests of the owners of any of these properties to be included in this municipal boundary line changed. The, I guess, fifth request would be, Artisan shall undertake and complete at its sole expense the surveying, engineering, and preparation of all the legal descriptions and plot plans, including, but not limited to, the actual boundary line plan necessary for the changing of the municipal boundary under the Act. All required monumentation shall be installed by Artisan at its sole expense in accordance with the Act. All work undertaken and/or completed by Artisan concerning this boundary line change shall be reviewed and approved by the Lower Frederick Township engineer and solicitor as appropriate at Artisan's sole expense. And the last condition is, Lower Frederick Township shall be responsible for preparing the ordinance. All reasonable fees, costs, and expenses incurred by Lower Frederick Township in conjunction with this request and this proposed boundary line change are Artisan's sole obligation and shall be fully reimbursed by Artisan within 30 days of Lower Frederick Township forwarding an invoice for said fees, costs, and expenses to Artisan. Any invoice Artisan believes is unreasonable or not related to its request or to the boundary line change can be challenged by Artisan in accordance with the procedures provided in Section 510 Little G of the MPC. So these are the conditions that are currently listed in the resolution. If any of these conditions the board doesn't like, we can certainly strike them. If there is any condition that the board would like to add, we can certainly add it before the board votes on this particular resolution.
Does anyone on the board have a question, concern, addition, a strike? Personally, I'm okay with all of these conditions. However, when you folks came before us before, you had actually offered to use your traffic study to designate a no-truck road for Smith Road, and the section that I think we'd be interested in the most would be from Game Farm to Smith and Centennial. As Condition J.
Okay.
I would agree with that.
So if there aren't any other questions or conditions, do you have any comments? Jackie, did you want to speak to us?
So, these are, there's, well, we just added a third. There were two conditions in here that take me back and that I would need to take back to Artisan to have a discussion, because I thought that we had been working toward consensus on how to best address the intersection and to make it beneficial for both the residents that will be living within the community, and then also for the Lower Frederick residents that live along Smith Road, and then how they can benefit from then getting, you know, down to the sidewalk and then down into the borough. And that's been our focus. But the condition of sidewalk wrapping along Centennial and then down Smith Road is something that we had gone through quite extensively with your planning commission and talked about the grades, talked about the stormwater runoff. We've provided the swale. We're picking up the existing stormwater issues that are happening at the intersection. And when we had proposed as a voluntary offer, I don't want to belabor it, but you do have it Act 209, and so it's a voluntary offer to do the intersection improvement for what is right now performing as an A, to then adjust the sightlines and adjust where the stop signs are, to then provide better clearance and better, you know, opportunity for people to be turning left and right. And then it came back to us that it was, you know, much more important to shift the road into the property affecting Lot 1, which is the one lot in Lower Frederick, and provide better alignment. I believe it's taking it to a 60-degree angle, which was at the recommendation of your township engineer, that all of that was taken in totality to make that additional revision that we voluntarily agreed to, you know, to offer that to Lower Frederick, again, in totality for where the plan stood and the impact on Lower Frederick for this one lot. I never want to stand in front of a board, in front of a township, and, you know, and say that we're at a crossroad, but I just, I need to take it, I guess, back to Artisan because this is concerning in the implications it will have in their decision to make the adjustment and just have Lot 1 come out to Smith Road as a single driveway and to then just, you know, not be part of the overall community and have the lot, you know, just stand on its own merits and have to be, you know, zoning compliant and would probably get a different type of builder. It would, you know, if it was just on-lot sewer, it would just be much more of a traditional lot that would be in alignment, that would be in alignment with the other homes that are right now recently developed along Smith or, you know. So I just, I'd like to think that we could at least maybe have a little bit of discussion or if the board would consider having a little bit of dialogue back and forth about its true thoughts for the needed sidewalk from the proposed entrance of the community from there up to the intersection that we're now softening the bend, where we're providing the four-foot-wide paved shoulder, and then having it wrap around Smith where, at this time, you know, there is no further development. And even if in the future there is proposed consideration that, you know, I've been hearing now, we've all been hearing for over a year, you know, that maybe someday rolling turf would be developed into a residential community. But even that property has fragmented sections along Smith and, I believe, Cemetery that would not provide continual sidewalk. So much has gone into the consideration of what is appropriate for all municipalities and also to be still most viable for this community, that the intersection improvements was already a pretty heavy lift that was a voluntary offer, and we thought that it was always in the best interest of everyone to offer it and to come in with a sketch plan that we had already substantially worked through from straight compliance to best-case, you know, for everyone. So I'm definitely, you know...
It sounds to me like you probably should go back, talk to Artisan. Peter, is there anything that you would like to speak to on any of her comments or...
I'd like to say something first.
Sure.
You've mentioned several times about voluntary improvements to the intersection. The improvements of that intersection benefit every single person who'll be living in that development. It's not just going to benefit Lower Frederick. Everybody in that development, from Schwenksville Borough and Perkyomen Township, and yes, One Lot in Lower Frederick, all of them have to use that intersection going in and out every single day. So I'm a little perturbed that you're suggesting that this is only going to benefit us and that we're pushing to get it, when I can tell you, we have been in conversation with our neighbors in Perkyomen Township and Schwenksville Borough, and they all want improvements of that intersection. So this is not just us asking. That is an important part of this development, no matter who lives there, whether we have one house or 50.
And thank you for that. And Supervisor, Artisan would agree with you that it is to the benefit of all, and that is why since we came with a refined sketch plan to the municipalities last January of 2024, we had already, you know, TPD was already working on the traffic study. They were already working on, you know, improvements to the intersection. And so we agree, but that has to be balanced with that it is voluntary in the context that you do have an Act 209 in Lower Frederick Township and that this, if this intersection has not been part of a service area, that is not for us to determine. But we kind of forsaking that, it's not, we're not looking here and saying, well, what is the 209 fee per lot? It's just what is in the betterment of all. And then we, further than, after working with the township, then moved on to then, yes, we would, you know, make the revisions to then pick up the existing stormwater issues at the intersection of Smith, and we would, you know, adjust the boundary line to come into the property. So we have continued to add significant impact and to what the offer is, but it is also about, in order to get it to fruition. And that as I stand here and as I was, you know, in front of your planning commission and then in front of you several weeks ago, that we have other, you know, elements that are, you know, all happening at the same time, and everything, you know, is about how timing of pieces come together. And Langham working on, you know, the revised engineering to be able to provide to you so that then you can then, you know, timely be able to see the other conditions that we had, that I had spoken to several weeks ago. So I just...
I just want to just stop you there just for a second, so that I wanted to get some feedback from Peter.
Yes. So first off, Ms. Erickson, we do not have a viable 209 program. All right? If we tried to enforce it, we couldn't. It's not adopted legally. It's not fully adopted. So for you to kind of imply that this is an alternative, it absolutely isn't. There's a reason why there's no figures attached to this intersection, because there are, we've never calculated any figures. There is no 209 program. We couldn't apply it if we wanted to. So that's just a misunderstanding of what's going on here. Secondly, this intersection is right next to your property. It is not off-site. It is onsite. So I disagree with you saying these are somehow voluntary improvements. This is an onsite intersection, and therefore we have the right to ask you to make improvements to it. So I don't agree with you that it's voluntary. And then thirdly, I think you need to remember, this is a separate decision, separate and distinct from the land development review. It's not controlled by the MPC. It's controlled by, you know, Act 44, this new act regarding boundary line changes. And it's completely appropriate for this board to consider attaching conditions on doing this to ensure that it's not just you and your company that are benefiting from this, and that if we're going to change the lines that make up this township, it really should benefit the township as a whole and not some developer who's going to come in, build some houses, and leave. So, you know, that's where I'm coming from, from a legal standpoint.
Okay. Thank you, Peter. So Jackie, do you want to take this back to Artisan and discuss it with them, and then you can get back in touch with Peter at some point?
The one other point I just want to point out to the board, this is not, this is a resolution. It's not an ordinance. It's not an approval. So this is something that can be altered. So if you wish to vote on it tonight, you certainly can vote on it tonight. And if Artisan comes back and says, hey, we really need you to do X, Y, and Z... And if Artisan comes back and says, hey, we really need you to do X, Y, and Z, you know, the board can always amend that resolution at any point in time. Or if you do wish to have Artisan discuss it and come back and we can table this to another meeting, that's certainly appropriate. But if you do decide to adopt this ordinance or some, you know, you know, variation of it at tonight's meeting, you're not locked into it. Artisan is not locked into it at this time.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Jason, what ordinance number would this be or resolution? Sorry.
16.
16. So my question to the board then is, are we comfortable moving forward with passing the ordinance with the conditions we put forth so far and looking at the details? Or did you want to let Artisan go back and discuss it with their, and come back to us? I'm, I'm perfectly happy to pass this resolution this evening.
Jackie, do you have any preference?
Thank you. If it's possible, if I could just ask one question to the solicitors as far as timing that, so the ordinance, the resolution this evening, is this to propose the ordinance? Would this set the parameters for the, the beginning of the Act 41 so that then within, then you need at least 10 days to, you know, if all parties came together, that then we would need to then have?
This is just to basically tell the staff, Jason, myself, Carol, tell the residents that the township, you know, we've heard your request and we're thinking, okay, that's, we're going to pursue it. You know, obviously we can't, at this point in time, the board can't say, oh, we're going to pass this ordinance in the future. That would be improper and illegal. But what we are saying is that we've considered your request, we think it's appropriate, we're going to pursue it, we're going to work with you and work with Perkioman to put together the ordinance and put together the plan and, you know, set up that process for, you know, giving notice to the residents, giving notice to everyone that this vote's going to take place. That, that's all this is doing. It's just kind of.
Thank you for that clarity.
It's the beginning, not the end.
Right. So thank you.
You okay? Okay.
Do we have to add the truck traffic item to this as well?
It, it has been added. When you adopt the ordinance, if you want to add it, I just asked that you, you move to, sorry, adopt a resolution, you move to adopt this resolution with the amendment that additional condition be added concerning the restriction of truck traffic or Artisan assisting the township in restricting truck traffic on Smith Road. Is that a proper description, Carol?
Yes, I would say that Artisan provide the professional traffic study that would support an ordinance for restricting truck traffic.
Okay. Okay. So moving forward, the motion is to adopt Resolution 2025 R16 authorizing and directing township staff and consult consultants to work with Artisan Land Company to prepare the necessary documents and plans for the consideration of a request changed to the boundary line between Lower Frederick Township and Perkioman Township pursuant to Act 41 of 2022 to and also include amendments with the addition of the restriction of truck traffic on Smith Road. Is anyone in objection to passing this resolution this evening? Can I get a motion?
I'll so move.
Supervisor Hexter makes the motion. Can I get a second? I will make that second. Resolution passes unanimously.
Have their vote.
Sorry. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone not? Okay. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. Just up on left. But we can move forward with this. Arcadia Station subdivision.
We're, we're tabling this again for the May 7th meeting.
Is that why it wasn't in my packet?
Yeah, they still have not talked to the HOA, so.
Scratch that, we're going to be tabling that item this evening. That would have been for the dedication of the open space over at Arcadia with the maintenance agreement, but Giurafiele from the developer hasn't spoken to the HOA then, so we'll have to wait for that to happen. Okay. Next on our agenda, award and contract of mowing of the township properties.
Okay. So bid documents and information for bidders were available online through PennBid. Proposals were opened on 4/17/2025 at 6:30 at the Township Building. The Township did receive three bids for our 2025 and 2026 lawn maintenance. They were from Promark Landscaping, DeGento, and Affluent Retrieval Services. Promark Landscaping was the low bid. All the documents do appear to be in order and acceptance is subject to the receipt of the performance bond, payment bond, and certificate of insurance. So what's in front of the board is either to accept the lowest qualified bid, which would be for Promark in the amount of $124,998 or $62,4999 per year, or reject the bids entirely.
I have a question. This is a two-year bid, but if we go through year one and we're like, eh, not so much, do we have to take the second year?
So we did craft the agreement that with proper notice that we would not have to be, that we would not have to do the second year.
Because my understanding was we're going to kind of give this a try, see how it goes. And if it goes well, super. If it doesn't go what we expected, then we don't have to take the second year. So that's, that's correct, right? Okay.
Yes.
Great.
And also as a, as something to, to think about, if the board chose to reject these bids, if we were to roll this, understanding that we maybe rolled this out a little bit later than we would have liked, if we were to roll it out again for next year, the recommendation would be to do that in the fall before snow hits the ground and, and basically do the, do, do the process the same way we did this year, requiring the pre, you know, having the pre-bid meeting, taking every, you know, taking them around to show them all their locations. And we wouldn't want to be trying to do that in January, February, where we may have snow on the ground.
And, and the other question I have is, let's say we don't get rain for six weeks and so they, I'm assuming they're not going to come out and mow if it's not raining. So then this would be smaller, whereas if they do more, it'll, so this, we're not necessarily paying this exact amount. This is their bid.
This is with the.
Given, given what was in the.
Best case scenario.
Yeah. So this was with the full 30 weeks. We, based on the way we crafted the bid, we're already a few weeks into that 30 weeks. We would be expecting probably for it to take another two to three weeks, I guess, to get the, to finalize the paperwork. Does that sound about maybe right, Carol, or to kind of shore that up?
Yeah, I would assume it would be about three weeks out until they actually would start the mowing.
And then we also, we also set up the areas and it was part of the pre-bid meeting discussion that there would be some areas that may not, that may be like every other week or, so they, they understand it's a week to week. It's under our control to determine, you know, when they're mowing. So that, that's, that would be part of that communication on a weekly basis as far as what they've mowed that week and then what we would be looking for them to, to do for that, for the next week. So we, if we, for, for instance, if we had drought conditions or situations where they, they do understand.
The language that was in the RFP was very specific that we have control on a weekly basis on whether they actually cut or not.
Yep. So yeah, the total, the total amount is higher than, than what, because we won't be hit in 30 weeks. Well, I shouldn't say we won't because I guess, you know, summer, fall could go into December, I guess. Who knows these days?
Any questions? Any comments?
So the comparison we were using during the budgeting process or during this process was about $64,000 a year all in to mow everything. Lot of variables. This is 62 and a half, plus we wouldn't maintain equipment or even touch equipment, assuming all goes well and we don't have to mow for a concert. We still have the equipment if we need to do it. Okay.
Don't you think we'd be able to hire some part-time help to do the mowing and save money on this?
From what I understand, we've not tried that in a few years. That's always on the table.
I think it was spoken to. Marla had mentioned a couple of times.
With this kind of amount, you could hire two part-time people to do all of the mowing with our equipment and our men would be free to do the other work. And you wouldn't be nowhere near that amount.
Right. I think Peter spoke to it about hiring part-time help, using our equipment. I think you mentioned something about a liability.
Well, they'd be on our, we'd pay them. They'd be on our, yes. But part-time work, college kids.
They'd be our employees, so yes, we'd be liable for any injuries to them or any injuries they, you know, caused. Yes, obviously. But we, you know, part-timers, we wouldn't have to, you know, they wouldn't fall under any sort of pension, wouldn't have to provide them with healthcare. It's probably just straight salary, most likely.
I mean, we, we did discuss all of these options. I know that, not from memory, we talked through a bunch of things. We're still carting the mowers all over the township. We still have a truck, a trailer, a new mower every year at 17,000 to 20,000, whatever it ends up being. So, yeah, it was, it was discussed as options and then we're still managing those resources. Again, it's just an idea to take some workload off of the public works that they can do their summer projects more efficiently and not look to hiring more full-time.
Yeah, I don't think we need to circle back around to other options. I think this was what we decided to move forward with. I'm not adverse to, what, was the total on the lowest? From Promark, $124,998. What does that come out to? 62,4?
62,499.
And that potentially could be lower.
It's, it will be.
Right. We don't have to buy any mowers and we don't have to worry about all the things that go along with it. I'm willing to give that a shot for this year and if it doesn't work out, we don't have to renew for next year. We have that option in the RFP contract. It clearly states that if we're not happy, we can always drop it.
I would be interested to, Carol or whoever can navigate PennBid to see if, just from a timing standpoint, as Jason mentioned, if we put this out in the fall, what that looks like from a compared, you know, comparing the numbers. I, I just don't know. We've never done this, so I have no idea if 62 and a half a year.
Do we think it would have been lower if we had put it out earlier?
Gee, wow. Carol will be able to speak to this probably better.
Yeah, I, I don't have as much experience with mowing contracts as I do paving contracts, but in general, businesses like to get set at the beginning of the year with what they're going to be doing in the coming year. And I've have found with construction contracts, the earlier in the year we bid it, the more bids we get and the better prices we get because everybody's setting themselves up for the year. I would imagine by now, most of the mowing contracts, contractors already have a pretty good bead on what they're going to be doing for the coming year. They've already allocated their resources accordingly. So for that reason, it seems reasonable to me that if you did your bids in, at the end of the year for the following year, that that might be better timing for this kind of a bid.
So I guess my question for me now is if we move forward with this on a two-year contract and we're set at that 62, whatever, four, yeah, we can drop them if we're not happy with the service, but if we are happy with the service, do we have the option to go back and ask them to rebid for 2026? So we're actually locked in there. So do we stick with this, this number here for a two-year contract or do we decide to maybe forego it this year, put it out to bid earlier and see what comes back cheaper? So we have this, it's the option I'm looking at right now.
I mean, what I could say is I got one call from a contractor who was unable to hit, to get to the pre-bid meeting, you know, the positive, I believe, is three of the four contractors that, that walked, you know, we were out there for a couple of hours, actually put a bid in. And, you know, you realize that our, our areas are not, it's a, it's a lot of small areas, a lot of, and so I think the positive part too is that three of the four bidders and the, the one bidder may not have the equipment to maybe do what we, what we needed, actually put a bit, you know, put a bid in. I think that's very, because I wasn't so sure after I walked it and kind of went, wow, we really, it's not an easy thing where you're just hitting a field and mowing a couple of acres at a time, so.
So I'm wondering if anyone has any comments on, on that, that idea of, do we move forward with this with the two-year or should we wait?
Well, another thing to consider is we're going to have inflation, so this may look really good next year. So maybe it's premature to consider that. Isn't it something we can consider after the summer?
Okay. No, that's, that's a good point. Valid point. Well, we might as well move forward with this. I think we've discussed it. The motion is to accept the bid from Promark Landscape Inc. in the amount of $124,998 for the 2025-2026 lawn maintenance bid and further authorize the Township Manager to sign all necessary paperwork to complete the contract. Can I get a motion?
I'll so move.
Supervisor Hexter makes the motion. Can I get a second?
Call second.
Supervisor Byrd makes the second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Next is Public Works request for Conex boxes at the Public Works building area discussion.
Okay. As you may recall, this was tabled from the 3/27 work session meeting to allow the board to visit the Public Works facility. That did happen last Tuesday. If the board is interested in moving forward, the decision is whether to wait for, to budget for this year or authorize us to move forward now. It was also confirmed at that meeting that Public Works would be looking for the pull-down door conaxes. So based on, based on your site visit, and we don't need the decision tonight because I, we would need to shore up the, which is why I didn't put a recommended motion, we would need to shore up the amounts for the board, for that motion, because I know we had a couple of rates on there. So if, if.
So my, my question is, if we got, I know you guys want the, the roll. I'm, I'm on board with that. Do they have to be new? Can they be refurbished? Just, I mean, you're going to paint them anyway, right? So if we went with the refurbished or used with the roll, want like one roll end or whatever, how much would that be for the two boxes together?
So the 20, so they wanted a 20-foot and a 40-foot. So the 20-foot refurbished would have been, would be $4,095. For the 40-foot.
Is that the used one?
Used high cube container. That doesn't look like it's got the roll down door though.
I believe the 20 footer, it didn't come, wasn't an option for the roll up door. I think we wanted it more for the 40 footer with the mowers. I think the 40 footer was the only one that came as an option for the roll up door.
Okay.
I think the 20 footer still just had the double doors.
So I'm thinking that some of these doors are a little wonky here.
And your, and your write-up, you've got, I think it's reversed. So the 20-foot refurbished container with roll door on one end, that's the $4,095. It looks like it's the 40-footers that don't have the roll up doors.
Okay. So you've neither here nor there, the numbers are a little wonky. We're looking at like nine grand.
So then the one that you, the, the two that you were, I believe the Public Works would like is the two pictures that you provided as part of the write-up, which would be the 20-foot refurbished for $4,095 and then the 40-foot used high cube container for $2,995.
Okay.
So that would be $7,090 for the. So that would be seven thousand ninety for the containers plus one fifty.
Three hundred. One fifty for each.
Yes, so three hundred. Then we also have the fence that would be part of this.
I want to stick with the containers. What was that number again?
I've got seven thousand three hundred and ninety dollars delivered.
That's with the, the three hundred for the delivery?
Yes.
Okay. And then, of course, there's the fence. Okay, okay, I'm sorry, continue.
So then the fence, we were provided two quotes and this would be the fence that is in the back of the Public Works facility that, where the, where the trail kind of bends past the playground. From Monco Fence, that was nine thousand seven hundred and sixty and then from EC Fence and Ironworks, Inc., twelve thousand six hundred and ninety.
So what's not in this packet, I think that would have been helpful, but I can remember one of the last things that was provided.
Uh, the fence, the fence quotes are in there.
No, 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 I got the fence quotes. I'm talking about the little map.
Oh.
Showed where the fences were going to go.
Uh, that's, it's not in your packet.
No, no, it's, it's fine because I can, I remember in my mind the way that they wanted the fence to come straight out and then cut, cut to the back and then they want the.
You want me to share the?
Fence over here, if you can share it, that would be great. That would be fine. No, I could have sworn you had a map that showed where the fencing was going to go specifically because it clearly went over the trail. It, it kind of overlapped on the.
It's right here.
On the walking trail. No, I see where the existing fences.
I think we had a.
I'm talking about the new position of the, of the fencing that they want to get.
I think we did have, I think I put your, I know this was what I drew up on the computer the other day.
Okay.
And I wasn't able to put it out.
No, that's fine, that's fine. I, I mean, it would have, it would have been beneficial, but I, I remember. No, that's okay. So I guess for me, after going through the Public Works, thank you very much. Yes, there is a need. You need to have some more organization over there. I agree with that. What I'm questioning is where you want to put the boxes. It seems to me to reconfiguring the back space behind the salt shed and moving the fencing out, which would then encroach upon the trail, is like you're, you've already got space in the front, why don't you use that space? You already have the twenty footer out there, why don't you put the forty footer out there instead of cramming it behind the salt shed and then having to spend all the money on all this brand-new fencing just to replace the fencing that's already existing there now? That would be my thought. It looks like there's plenty of room out front to put a forty foot. You've already got a twenty foot there now. Just do a little bit of fence repair and get the two, the two containers. That's my suggestion.
Would, would it be out like towards Little's, like in that corner or near where the twenty footer is now?
Well, I think it would be reasonable to put the twenty footer back where the twenty footer is and then, I mean, there was a huge dumpster there like a week and a half ago, so the forty foot would definitely fit there out in the front, front lot instead of cramming it behind the salt shed. And it's supposed to be a temporary fix. It seems kind of permanent when you're spending money on fencing to come out. It's going to end up impeding on the, on the trail for the, the park, the park trail. Any other questions?
I guess, is there any opposition to having it in the parking area versus behind the salt shed?
So I could, could one of you come up and speak into the, that would be helpful. Maybe put it back on the thing.
Because I think right now it's, there was construction equipment stored there from the road project and I believe Little's uses it for parking, is if it's the area I'm thinking, you're thinking of.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so like we would have to put the forty footer like a, kind of along the tree line to make it fit there, but the only other problem I would see with that is like we have, we park our three trailers out like to the right of the twenty footer now.
Right.
So it would just, they would stick out more than, and then even for events like, like the Easter egg hunt this past weekend, like that parking lot was, was it being used? I'm not sure, but I know we moved everything out of the parking lot on Friday so that there would be room for parking and, you know, as needed, but I, I wouldn't want to try to tie up the parking lot more than we already do, but, and I know I call throughout the summer with the softball teams practicing there, like the parking lot is, is filled up quite often too on like Thursday nights. The location of the fence in the back where we would be putting the new fence on the, the, when I measured it out with like tape measure and stuff, it was, it was about a foot off of the trail still, so it wouldn't be right on the blacktop, but it's still, it's a little bit closer than what it is now.
Yeah, I know, I know now with the new lot line adjustment, you can shimmy that around back there.
But, I mean, price-wise, I don't think it would be much of a difference if we, unless we like did the same wood fencing, that would probably be a little bit cheaper than the chain link. I kind of would.
I would prefer that, I mean, if you're going to do it, do what you had wanted. And I, and I understand why, putting it in the back that you would want the two swing gates facing the parking lot and then the other gate down at the other side along the fence line for the other property. I understand that. I'm just thinking from, it's a temporary fix, is, is there a way that you can manage that fence so that it doesn't impede on the trail?
I mean, we could, we could keep it back still off the trail a little bit and I think still fit.
Because I remember it was kind of like poking right into it.
Yeah, it was, yeah. I think, so the boxes are about eight feet wide each. I think there was, I think, I believe the, off the front corner there, that's why I had the twenty-foot box positioned halfway back on the forty footer too.
Mm-hmm.
That way we had room and we could, we could have that fence come in even more on, we could have it three feet off of the trail if we wanted to, you know what I mean, off and have that.
So there is some wiggle room there?
Still, yeah, that's, that's essentially why I had the, the twenty-foot box on the back half towards the middle of, you know, the, the salt building rather than up at the front corner.
Okay, does anybody have any comments or questions while we have you up?
I'm, I'm fine with your proposed plan and I just want to say for whoever wants to listen is that original building was supposed to be temporary. So temporary sometimes is not so temporary. We just don't know what the future will hold. It could be a year, it could be ten, hopefully not, but.
This is why, I have no objection to purchasing those boxes.
We just don't know what's going to happen.
Right.
Life is unexpected.
Putting it back there is going to clean up a lot of bushes, a lot of overgrown trees and it would clean it up. So I, I would say stay back there with it and nobody would see it. If you have to jockey the containers a little.
Right.
Get away from the track, then do that.
So with the loss of the twenty foot out, you're going to get some more room out there, of course.
Yeah, we could tuck our trailers.
You can move them further over.
Right.
Okay.
Or add another bin like for stone and stuff like that.
Stone.
Because we always seem to be one bin short for when we're doing stuff, so.
Understood.
Do we have the existing, just to make sure when we're ready to purchase? Do we have a contract that we need to give thirty days or any sort of notice that we don't keep paying for it?
That's a month to month, so I, that, I, I could look at that further, Terry, but I, I believe when we, when we're ready to cease it, it didn't seem to be a forever kind of blood contract kind of thing.
Okay.
And I think, did you, did you inquire about that, didn't you, Tom?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They, they can take that one away when they drop it.
Because I think you asked like why, because something like we couldn't keep that if we wanted to, they would have to come pick it up and it was, it's a, whatever their policy, so.
So obviously then we might as well talk about the fence. We're obviously going to go with the ninety-seven, sixty. The other one was twelve, six, ninety. Does anyone have any question about the fencing?
There was no difference, right? As far as you could tell?
It was, yeah.
Exact same.
Is this quote good, firm? It's not going to change?
I wouldn't think they would, no. I mean, Monco Fence, they, they email me once every month asking, you know, if, if we've gotten any farther with it, you know.
Okay.
So I don't, I don't think there's ever some change.
This is a fairly new quote too. Yes?
Yeah, I think it was changed.
All right, well, I'm, I'm going to assume this is a consensus. This isn't a, a, a vote, correct?
Uh, no, we would, we would need a vote on this.
You want to move, you want to vote on this?
Yeah, because there would be money spent. If, if you guys want to move forward now, chew on it a little bit more now that we're as close as, you know, we've, we've gotten a little closer, it's, it's certainly up to you guys.
I'm sorry, say that again?
If you guys want to chew on it more or kind of.
No, I don't, I don't, I don't, does anybody else want to chew on this some more? I don't think we need to chew on this more.
Yeah, it's a little rough.
We've been there, we saw, we discussed. We can move on. We can vote on this on Tuesday. That's fine. You want to do it tonight? Okay, we can do it tonight. All right, I guess, ooh, let me wing it.
I'm okay voting tonight. I mean, we can wait, but I mean, I don't know, that's.
I guess then there's a, a motion on the table to move forward with the township manager following through with the purchase of two Conex boxes, twenty-foot and forty-foot for seventy-three, ninety and new fencing for ninety-seven, sixty at the Public Works building. Can I get a motion?
I make a motion.
Supervisor Sax makes the motion. Can I get a second? I will second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, guys.
Thanks.
Township Building HVAC system repair discussion. Jason.
So, Tustin, who is our service provider for our HVAC units here at the Township Building, they came out at the end of the Feb, February to look at our unit number one, which is, covers the administrative area, kind of the front of the building upstairs. The condenser motor had been running constantly. At that time, it was determined to look at replacement parts, which was a compressor and reversing valve. A proposal was given at the beginning of March. Tommy and I were quite surprised as it was initially thought we could get repair parts at a much lesser amount and that repair, which is in your packet, was proposed at eleven thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Due to the cost of that repair, we asked what a new unit installation might cost, which we got in late March. This cost was proposed to be twenty-six thousand one hundred and twenty dollars. In discussing with the technician, Tommy was told the replacement of the condenser coil and parts would be like upgrading the city, system or refitting. If the board chooses to go with a new unit installation, we would need to get at least two more quotes and we potentially would have to bid this project out if they are over twenty-three thousand. Unless we went through Co-Stars, which, so we would just have to find a Co-Stars dealer, which.
So how old is that HVAC system?
I believe it went in in two thousand seventeen.
Twenty seventeen? Was it under warranty? Was it under warranty?
It, it's all about ten years old. I don't know what, there, as far as I know, there's no warranty because the company does her maintenance, did the install on that.
Is this the only company that we use? It's the only company we could use? Do we have to use them?
That, that was the only company ever bid on doing the PMs for the, they're, they're the only companies ever bid to do the work.
This is the only one we can get to come out here and look at this, really? All right. I'm just asking.
No, we, we had other, they, to do the maintenance, that's the company, the only company we could get.
This is our maintenance company?
Yes.
Okay.
They did the install on that. At that point, that was the lowest price and then the last one, I forget who did that.
Okay.
But we had gotten three quotes for that because of the price.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I saw that, I think you guys, I think the police unit was replaced and it was like Hannah Berry, Tustin and another company that, that was for a new installation.
I know nothing about HVAC, so, so they, I'm, I'm curious, they give you one for replacing parts and then one for like replacing the whole system. Is this, is it their recommendation as professionals that we do one or the other of these? Like I don't know enough about this.
The, the place.
Reasonable decision as to whether we should fix it or replace it.
The repairman told me that with these parts, it's basically a new unit. Is the way it was explained to me because I don't know much about it either.
So if we spend eleven seven fifty, it might as well be a new unit as opposed to.
That, that's my understanding, yes.
Okey-dokey.
Yes, I only asked for a new unit because when I saw the eleven thousand, I was like, holy, like that was kind of holy deep, because I don't know what a new unit costs, so.
Do you know anything about HVAC? Or enough to?
Thermostat.
Thermostat.
No, I don't, the, the workings of them, no.
I mean, my feeling is if a thing is broken, we need to fix it, but my real question is like eight years seems not very much time for the thing to break down and need eleven thousand dollars, so I mean, we just, I don't know.
Maybe a second, a second look from somebody else.
It seems like it should last longer than eight years, but.
Seven.
Seven. But I mean, if it's not working, we need to do something, right? It's getting warm.
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't know what the length of commercial units are. Our units work pretty hard because of the way the, the layout of the buildings are. So I, I, I don't know what the expected life is on these units since we are using them all year round.
So that's just for that area back there? There's this, another one in here?
Correct.
Okay.
Does anybody here know anything about HVAC that could speak to this? Anybody in the public? Anyone? Yeah?
So Tustin is not.
Sorry, can, can you come up to the front?
While he's doing that, you, you said Tustin did not install this, they're just service it?
They're just the service.
Tustin installed this one.
Did he install on this one?
But yeah, they do do our, they, they do our PMs.
All right, Phil.
Phil Smith girl up road. Quite honestly, they often carry a ten-year warranty on the compressors and the, you know, the equipment, so I would check into that. There may be a warranty and you're just not aware of it, so. I know our carrier unit carries a ten-year warranty, you know, it's a heat pump. I assume that's what you're getting because you're getting a reversing valve and that sort of suggests to me that it's not just an AC that you're getting. So I would, I would look into that. That would be my recommendation.
I guess at that point you could go back to Tustin. If they're the one that installed this, they would actually have that on record. Do we have a warranty? Do we, do we have that anywhere? Yeah, okay.
I can try to take a look at, well, we know when we look into the archives, that's a, we have mixed results. I have not stumbled on anything yet as far as the, you know, what the original unit purchase order would look like.
But if we have like a serial number or a model number or something on it, I mean, we could maybe figure it out. I don't know. Do we know who we bought it from? Is there any, anything on it?
Everything was bought through Tustin Company. They did the installation and they would probably have a record if we do have a warranty.
That's not, that's what I was suggesting, that maybe they did.
So it says you're just replacing the condenser, right? That's what he.
Condenser and other parts, if I remember correctly.
The condenser, it's the same as on a car and a truck or anything else. Your condenser is your main unit that you need. Once you replace them, the unit is in pretty good shape other than that. Your condenser does all the work.
Yeah.
Okay, so as I'm hearing it now, first we should maybe look into seeing if this has a warranty on it. I don't think replacement is an option. I think that, well, I guess that's, I mean, from what Supervisor Sax has just said, and I tend to agree, that we should just move forward with getting the repairs done unless we can find somebody else to come out and give us a quote, but if this is the only game in town that seems to want to be interested in coming out, then are we stuck with them?
We can probably get other companies come out and give us a quote to do a repair or replacement possibly.
How fast do you think you can get them together?
It all depends on the response from the companies.
Do you want to give this a couple weeks and see if we get any responses? And if not, we can move forward with this? Is this an emergency?
It's just the time of year. Like, right now, it's been running on emergency heat, obviously, depending on the day, you know, AC's gonna be of...
Yeah. Anybody else have any...
That's kind of where the timing is a little rough, because we know, we know the building's gonna be in use on May 20th and stuff, so... So would the board, if the board considers authorizing moving forward with the repair, but at the fact that we look into other avenues, so I'm not calling, you know, we're not pulling the trigger, is that, would that be acceptable to the board?
That seems to me to be fair enough, I don't know. Does anyone else have a comment or question about that?
The only thing I would do is if you could maybe ask Tustin if, what kind of warranty we had on that original unit, and if there's any coverage, like you said, if it's 10 years on the compressor, what, if we have any warranty on the compressor? Maybe, maybe they, I mean, maybe they didn't look, maybe they don't want to, I don't know.
The only other issue we would, and we don't know how long it's gonna take for parts to get in, I don't know, part supply chains, you know?
Right, that's what I'm saying, is I would just want to know if we have any warranty on that, so we don't have to pay for the whole amount. But I'm happy to approve moving forward with the repair, with the condition that we check to see if any of it's covered on the warranty.
Yeah, that's a simple phone call.
Yep.
Should we meet in two weeks?
We do.
Yeah, but then they still have to order the parts.
They still have to order the parts, that's what I'm saying.
Two weeks, I mean, and this is heat that we're not getting? Or it's not gonna do air conditioning either?
Right now, I don't think it's, it's the...
It's running on the backup heat for the winter. I don't think the air conditioner will work.
That's, that's the joys of the timing.
Any thoughts?
I mean, I think we should go ahead and vote that pending confirmation of any warranty on any of the parts that we approve, you know, after they do that, approve the repair for, what is it, $11,750.
You just made the motion.
Oh, okay.
Okay, is there a second? Anyone, second? Oh, so the motion is to authorize the repair by Tustin at a cost of $750, under the condition that we find out if there is a warranty on this.
On second.
Okay, so the motion was made by Supervisor Hexter, the second was made by Supervisor Sacks. All those in favor?
Can I ask something?
You can ask a question?
I have a question. So we're not, we're not gonna get a second opinion at all? We're just gonna go with Tustin?
I think we're gonna look at finding someone else to have as a backup, other than just Tustin. I think there's a, it's a matter of...
Yeah, I don't disagree.
Listen, I would, I would love to go and get a second opinion, but we have the primary coming up, and there's no air, we don't know if it's gonna be hot.
And it's getting warm.
Yeah.
Well, make them sweat a little bit. I mean, the proposal, I mean, this is from March, beginning of March, so it's like, we're making this emergency decision again. I guess I'm just confused on what's taking so long to get...
I'm not gonna say that wasn't lost on me. The service report was from February, so...
If that's what needs to be done, and that's the price, I completely get it. But this is just another, decide right now, or else, so...
It's sort of a surprise, but not really. Okay, so the motion's out there, the first was made, the second was made. We're going to vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes unanimously. Next on our agenda, Springmount Road Sidewalk Project Change Order Number One. Carol?
I think that's me.
That's you.
So, first of all, I guess everybody knows, they got the new culvert in. Can't hear me? Can everybody hear her? They got the new culvert in.
That's better.
Thank you. And got the road back open in that five-day time window, which is fabulous news. It's a little celebration there. When they were excavating the road for the culvert installation, the existing pavement surface was shockingly thin. There were only two or three inches of asphalt material over the stone, and since I've been here, we've micro-surfaced that road, we've chip-sealed that road, so I'm figuring the top inch is probably seal treatments. So there was really not much pavement there, so...
Is this over the bridge?
Yeah. This is over that culvert. So what this change order is, I think we're gonna get a better project if we mill that road for a length of about 145 feet, and then we're gonna mill off just the old seal coats, the old micro-surfacing, the old chip seal, get that off of there, because a new pavement won't stick well to that. So we're getting, get off those surface treatments, then build up with a leveling course, and then a full inch and a half wearing course on top of that for this 145 feet, and then stitch it in at either end. We'll get a better road overall, we'll seal over the new trench, we'll also seal over any other repairs that were done, or holes that were done over the years in that range. And for that, we're looking at a total cost, or in the change order, cost of $18,625. That's about 6.5% of your $286,000 contract. I did compare this cost to what we project the cost would be if we did this separately later on under the equipment bid. It's very similar, and actually, this change order would be slightly lower, because they already have that equipment on site. So I'm recommending the board consider this change order, so that we get a better project in the end, a little more thickness of pavement over that culvert. Again, I have pavement thickness immediately over the trench in the original design, quite a few inches thick, but when there's paper mache on either side, that's kind of pointless. So this would give us a better project overall. Also, in the change order, I amended the time for completion of work, because we did ask them to pause while we look at this change order, rather than having to have the work done by May 1st, which is only, which is pretty darn close right now. I gave them until May 15th with this change order, so you're still gonna see this project done in the next few weeks. Just gives them a little bit of breathing room, since we asked them to pause while we looked at this change order.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
In terms of the overall project cost, I think, and I may be wrong, that we came a little bit under what we thought it would cost. So are we still gonna be okay in terms of what we had budgeted, given that, or how much over are we gonna be?
I believe we're in the realm, I'm trying to remember the actual budget numbers, $200,000 comes from the Montco program.
That was the grant?
Yes.
And then how much was our match from the ARPA funds?
It was $111.
$111.8 or four?
Yeah, it was $111.
So we're in good shape there, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was, that was part of, that was gonna be part of my question. So we're actually covered with no, nothing coming out of anywhere else? We have the money to cover this, between the grants and the ARPA? Is that what I'm hearing?
That's how I'm hearing it right now, too, yes.
Getting confirmed?
Yes.
Good news.
Okay. And it ends up being a better product altogether? It's only a one-week delay? Yeah, I know. So before we do this, does anybody have any questions or comments? No? Okay. So the motion is to accept change order number one from G&amp;B Construction Company, Inc., as stated in a value engineering memo dated 4/16/2025 for the Lower Frederick Springmount Sidewalk Project, and further authorize the chair to sign on behalf of the township. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Supervisor Sacks makes the motion. Can I get a second?
I will second.
Supervisor Hexter makes the second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes unanimously.
It's gonna be great to see that finished.
Yes. Last but not least is, back again, updated Melbourne subdivision road names. Go ahead.
So, as you may recall, the board adopted Resolution 2025-R-10, naming the roads in the Melbourne Hill subdivision. Those names were Gable Drive and Ruth Molly Hopkins Way. While the developer had no issues with Gable Drive, as stated in the response that I provided, they think Ruth Molly Hopkins Way is a long name for a street and would like it shortened. And I can say, when Peter sent this out to the board, we did get a response back from Chuck, who suggested doing Hopkins Drive and Ruth Molly Way, kind of split, and then changing to Gable Drive is maybe an option to...
When I, when I got the response back from the developer saying it was too long, I thought maybe it might be wise if we save Ruth Molly Hopkins for something else, and maybe if we go with Gable Drive and Noah Way. Take his name, split it in half, they're both easy names, because nobody seems to be coming up with anything else at this point.
I like Chuck's suggestion, which is Ruth Molly Way and Hopkins Drive.
I don't mind those names, but originally, the gable came from the actual land that it's on, the farm it's on. So, again, I don't want to get into too long of a debate on this one, but I'd like to keep Gable somewhere in the, because of the actual census or the maps from the 1800s, that's what that farm was.
I think that's the plan that we were going with so far. We did Steiner for Farm View, and we're going with Melbourne now, where we're trying to keep it synonymous with the property owners. Grady Hopkins owns the property across the streets. The Libsy project back in that way. Okay, so I think it would be appropriate to save any development that comes to that area for, over in that section, and why don't we just split the difference with Noah Gable and Gable Drive, Noah Way?
Or we could have Noah Gable Way, and we could have Seattle Drive, or one of the other ones.
It's, Seattle is, that's not that creek. That's a different creek, on the other side of Little Road.
Yeah, that's not even, yeah.
I love this process.
To name a road.
Are we okay with, are we okay with Gable Drive? Let's start with one.
We've got, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with Gable Drive.
Everyone okay with that one still?
And I'm still throwing out Noah Way.
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
We could torture them with goshen hopping.
I still think Underkoffler should be on the table.
I'm not adverse to it, but it's probably as much of a mouthful as Ruth Molly Hopkins Way. Terry, you have any thoughts on this?
It's fine.
You're good with that, too?
All righty.
Because if not, we'll be here...
Yeah, it's the last thing on the item.
Next meeting, next meeting.
Right, right.
We may get it done by next year.
Okay. All right, well, then, I'm gonna make, let's move this forward here. We're going to move to adopt Resolution 2025-R. Do we have to rescind 10, the one we did before?
It's, it's in the resolution that it would repeal previous...
It is? You got something written down I don't got?
Whereas the Board of Supervisors previously adopted 2025-R-10, naming the roads, and whereas the, oh, is that the wrong?
That's not what I have on here. You want to pass that down to me?
Hold on. Oh, at the end of the, be it further, this resolution hereby repeals Resolution 25, 2025-R-10, and it's...
Where's that, where's that written?
Very bottom.
I thought, I knew I added it.
All right, I'll just put an arrow up, and I'll read it, okay. The motion is to adopt Resolution 2025-R-17, approving the name of the roads in the Melbourne Hub subdivision to Gable Drive and Noah Way. This new resolution will repeal the previous resolution, 2025-R-10. Can I get a motion?
You realize that they're gonna make jokes about Noah Way?
At least it's not stupid.
I'm just saying.
Well, they won't forget it, won't they?
No, they won't.
Okay. Can I get a motion?
I will make that motion.
Thank you. Supervisor Byrd makes the motion. I will make the second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously.
And I want a nickel every time someone says Noah Way, I'm gonna be able to get rid.
Okay, we have, is there any public comment to say anything? Sure, Katie.
On the events calendar, the Board of Supervisors meeting for May is on May 7th. Is that accurate? That's a Wednesday? Okay, just wanted to check.
Because of the primary.
I missed the January meeting. That's my thought.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ernie?
Yeah, I just want to talk about the changes in the voting districts. I passed out papers, I left at your places up there. Basically, I just wanted to give you some information. As you can see, Area 1 is a small area. It's about one square mile. The size of Lower Frederick is eight square miles, and it's in the hands of the voter services right now. They'll make their decision on whether we'll have Area 1 and 2 at one location at the middle school by sometime midsummer to late summer. Other than that, people in Area 1 are pushing just to leave Area 1, go to the Township Building. Other than that, I can't promise anything at this juncture, and I just gave you the information, so you'd have it.
Thank you very much, Ernie, I appreciate your efforts on this.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Any supervisor comments? Okay, hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.
Crystal raised her hand. I'm sorry.
I didn't see Crystal raise her hand.
We're gonna have public comment next month or next week.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't even see her hand.
Can we still talk? Can we still take her comment?
It's done, the rooms are named. It's over. I don't want to drag that out anymore.